Ms. Lucas?
Thank you.
Doctor.
No, that's okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our study session on technology this afternoon. Most of it will be on instructional technology with some being on IT toward the end. We talk about the budget piece. Just to give you a sense of where we're going, somehow these two slides got out of order, but can we go to the overview? Melissa, you gave me a clicker for this reason.
I'm here.
Okay, thanks. I was wondering where.
The function.
Yes. So to give you all a sense of where we're going, always a teacher, we're going to start with a quick overview. I'm going to give a little background and context. They're talking about, we're going to share some information with you and then we're going to ask you what you're most interested in knowing about school, so that we may adjust what we're planning to do to your needs. Then we're going to give a high-level Schoology update and then we're going to dig in a little bit by talking about what are the specific challenges that our teachers, mostly our teachers, probably 90% of the feedback we've received in terms of challenges have been from our teachers and maybe 10% from site administrators. So we want to be very transparent about that. Nancy's going to walk us through that. Gretchen's going to be the lead for the board activity. And then an Ares update, which includes Ares Communications and Ares Gradebook because Schoology goes hand-in-hand with those two things. We're going to then have a brief discussion about one-to-one and take home and what that means for the future, particularly in 19th and 11th grades right now. And then the budget ask that we brought in May, I'm going to revisit that. The purpose of this entire presentation is to kind of give you an update on what's happening with Schoology and one-to-one in anticipation of our full board presentation on the next technology plan, which will be in about three weeks. So that said, can we go back to the background slide, Lisa? Thank you. So very, very quickly, I think most of us know that the last technology plan set in June, okay? And without going too deeply into it, because I'll do that in three weeks, a lot was accomplished. I mean, I would say 90% of what we set out to accomplish in that plan happened. And that's very unusual for a tech plan. Oftentimes, a district's tech plan sits on a shelf, never to be revisited after their past. We can, and I've shared this before, with Pride as a district, say that as a community, we work together to actualize that plan and bring it to life. The last four years have focused on these things. I'm not going to read them to you, but they're mostly about building human and technical infrastructure. When I came, gosh, I can't believe this is the beginning of my fifth year ago, our infrastructure was not what anyone, when Karthik was here, he was one of the people who I talked about, I mean, more than talked about it with, he gave advisement. Only shows that any transformative work necessitates professional development and support for teachers, or don't do it. So the teachers have a right to robust differentiated professional development that honors who they are as professionals. And then beyond that, it's not a good idea to have professional development without coaching because who's there to have dialogue with and support you as you implement? I know when I started as a principal, I had a coach. And that helped me tremendously become the leader I dreamed of being one day. And then this notion of establishing a change management protocol is a pillar of our work. And all that means in this context is that we pay attention to the human side of the change, that we don't minimize the fact that people are taking on something new and there's a science and a methodology behind that. So we worked hard to implement a change management protocol that helped guide us through most of our initiatives. So that's our, I mean, as many of you know, I could talk about this for four hours and probably have, but that's the Reader's Digest version of it. So if we could go back to the Schoology update slide, Lisa, and I'm going to ask our teachers if they wouldn't mind coming up and taking, you know, three to five minutes to talk about their experience with Schoology thus far, what they're hoping, how they are hoping it evolves, and the vision they have for it. And they're going to be very honest. They've encountered some challenges and they're going to talk about that as well as any hope they have for how we move forward. So you all wouldn't mind coming up and tag teaming off with each other?
I would go first.
Oh, Paula wants? If you don't mind.
Yeah, I would ask you to take a chair.
You guys want chairs?
Yeah, would you like a chair?
No.
Okay.
Josh wants a chair.
Okay, well, April Gold Sobel, this is my ninth year in the district and I teach just grade history and did shoot your film at BB. Keep saying Elradao, but eventually. Very happy there, everyone, love BB. So Schoology. I had the pleasure of going to the Schoology conference in Boca this past summer and it was amazing. And I was blown away by all the potential the Schoology has to offer. The functions that School
If you put a bad term phrase now, if you asked me on the spot what I'd pick today, I'd pick Jupiter because I've spent the last, I don't know, 10, long time, years using it. So I'm very familiar with it and very comfortable. It's got an incredible messaging program, I think, for communicating with parents. It's a very user-friendly entry program, but it has a limit and it stops. So using Jupiter has to go with something else at Google Classroom. Jupiter Grades does not stand alone, solve all of our communication needs, allows for amazing media opportunities that either using Classroom with Jupiter or using our LMS, which is Schoology. Is that what you're looking for? Am I in the right place?
You're sorry?
Start in the day, my brain is a little. Am I speaking clearly? Am I speaking English?
Of course you are. You're still in the right place.
That's my first quick synopsis.
Katie Carter, I teach middle school math. Yep, is that too? So my experience with Schoology is almost the opposite of April's in that she went to the training and so she knows all that it can do and I don't understand all that it can do. And I don't think I trust you, but it can do a whole lot more. I just haven't figured that out yet. What I'm, I'm trying to learn it. So because I can teach sixth grade, I decided I was not going to use Jupiter Grades. These kids have never used Jupiter Grades. Why would I make my students figure out how to use Jupiter Grades and then, you know, just because I'm still trying to figure out Schoology, throw me in and I'll figure it out. And I'd rather teach myself than make them learn two different things in six months. So I'm trying. And I guess I'm not, I want to know all the things that it can do. I want to learn all those things. In the middle school right now, I think we're so overwhelmed with, you know, rotating schedule and new location and my boxes arrive and I need a bookshelf and things like that, that Schoology added to that list. You know, I'm kind of, I've learned at this point the basics that I need to get through. I know how to upload my homework and I know how to, you know, do their grades and things like that. So working on it. The flip side of that is I'm also a parent in the district, so I can also, if you don't mind, I can talk about that perspective as well. And that, that is, I don't understand how to use it as a parent. So, and what I do know is only because I've logged in as a teacher and I know what that looks like. I think a piece of that is because not all of my daughter's teachers are using it and probably using it about as effectively as I am, which is not very. And so maybe once all of the teachers are using it and all of the teachers are using it effectively, then the parents will come along. But there are certainly aspects that I miss about Jupiter that maybe Schoology does and I just don't know it yet. I know I miss and I've had other parents tell me that they miss, like the weekly email of their kid's grades. I don't know if Schoology does that, I have no idea. But, you know, there are little pieces of it that we miss or if it doesn't do it this way, how does it do it? And so I think maybe training or information for everybody would be helpful. So, there goes, that's what I got.
Josh Glass, math teacher at the high school. And, you know, I guess some of the same things, I think right now we've been using, or those who have been using it, using Jupiter Grade, or Schoology similar to how we use Jupiter Grades. It's just, here's where we put the homework, here's where we put notes and worksheets, and here's where we put your grades. At the high school, I don't know if this is where everyone, the issue I found that other teachers and myself have run into is it's no longer just, we put our grades in Jupiter Grades and they're there and at the end of the semester, it gets sucked into Ares. Now it's, we put it in Jupiter Grades, we have to make sure it communicates with Ares properly and then we have to upload it and then we push another button, it goes to Ares and then we go back and we're telling the kids, they can look in two different places. Like you said, Jupiter messaging was really smooth, really easy. Schoology messaging is not. It doesn't get forwarded to the student's email or parent email. So then we're supposed to use Ares email. And the high school really got tripped up because we were having trouble getting the kids logged on. And so a lot of teachers were like, okay, well, we're just not going to use it. And so now we have people at all kinds of places. You know, someone is just like, Katie, I'm just going to do it and we'll figure it out. I found similar to Jupiter Grades, once I've gotten it going, except for the added steps of, oh, I have to go into Ares now and update my roster so that my Ares and Schoology can talk to each other. And those are things that used to be with Jupiter Grades, kind of done at the administrative or someone else would take care of that before it got to us. And so we get error messages sometimes and we kind of have to work through where those are coming from. I know some of it's a new program and everyone's trying to figure out how to balance it, but that's kind of the struggle, I think.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is the tricks. Like, for example, Lauren Stewart, who couldn't be here tonight because she has other children besides the one she has all day at school. And I don't know how you do that, by the way. That just blows my mind. I'm like, I go home and I'm like, really? A child is there? I don't understand how you do that. I have dogs, that's enough. But you can leave them alone, they're wonderful. But, for example, the settings you can have where you can, parents can do, kids can do, we did it, where it goes to their personal email. All the Schoology emails dock into their Gmail accounts. So they will see it, everything. There's those little tricks are things we all need to know about. And so far, we're learning about them by trial and error and word of mouth. It'd be great to put together like Tricks the Trade, you know, all things to make life for parents and for students and for teachers easier, something we can work on as a staff because once we're spending more time with it, we can develop that and get that to everybody. I think that, not that I'm a Schoology rep or anyway, I'm just saying, I think we're all, everyone's like, oh, do you hear, you can do this. We're just not recording it somewhere and then sending it out to the masses. That's, I think we need to do that as well. We all need better sharing.
Yeah. Sure. That's been a long day. Sorry. Board members or anyone attending study session, want to ask our teachers any questions before they leave?
Well, I'm just making an observation that I have gotten emails from one of my child's teachers that he's in middle school and he's keeping the parents very informed about Schoology, telling them what to do, how to get the notifications, sort of pushes to their personal emails. He's fully switched over. And I wondered, why is this in a bubble? Why is this just one teacher doing this that should be coming from the site as opposed to the teacher? So I think that's a little hiccup.
Yes.
Because there's, I think there's right now two teachers of my child's that are using Schoology and being very communicative with the parents about, I'm switching over to Schoology, take my hand, I'll show you how to do this and keep a lookout for these things and the other classes are not. And I know we're in a rollout period, so I get it. I just, it's gonna, I think it's going to in the end congregate message when it comes from individual classrooms.
And I think the answer to that is because those teachers that you're hearing that from are very comfortable using it. You won't get that email from me of, here, if you need help, I'll hold your hand through Schoology because you better be holding mine. Because, you know.
But there ought to be some way that we can pair teachers that are super comfortable with it with a group of teachers that are maybe not and let them have support from their peers because that's
And rather than the way we're doing it, which is running across the hall, being, hey!
I would say there's some of that at the middle school, but not at the level that I've experienced, just from, it's not even towards me, it's more towards my kids. And I really have seen a drop in the communication substantially this year. I mean, I would say that if I received maybe five emails from the school this year in comparison, I went back and looked last year, we, there was one teacher that was emailing, you know, she would email the kids in the morning, in the after class, and then, I mean, that's an exceptional teacher who communicates a lot, of course. But I think generally, even you, Mr. Glass, we communicate, I think, at least three times, four times a week. And I remember seeing those emails as just as a parent. But I would say that that has not been my experience as a parent at all at the high school this year. And this is kind of the feedback that I've heard from parents and from kids, what I've heard is that they're frustrated because they don't know how to communicate with teachers on Schoology. So that seems to be
I think that's a really big learning group. Because we were also told, at the high school at least, to use Ares communication. I know Ares has some things that Schoology doesn't. And then there's, not everyone's not using Ares and not all the parents are going to use it. So I sent a message out to Ares and I got where I usually would get maybe 25% of the people
And also, I've noticed, like, I know that my kids go to school, I'm going to just say that, and they're telling me, one is telling me they have seven classes, one's telling me they have six. I only see four and five. I don't see, and this is another complaint from parents, they don't see the entire program of classes for the day.
That's Schoology.
So I'm not seeing, so I'm like, are you guys sure you're registered?
I didn't do use Schoology and so we're having people using different platforms.
Right.
And with that comes a lot of confusion, unfortunately. And then with Schoology, like, for example, I sent an email to parents before I went to school and I was flipgrid all the kids did. And a lot of the parents said, get it, because they have not user access code to actually even join Schoology. Even though it's posted as an assignment, I've sent them home by paper, it was sent home through Ares. There's, I saw parents who have not joined my classroom. So they will not get any emails from me sent through Schoology because they still have not user access code. And so I think having communication going home through Ares or whatever is the best way to reach these parents about the access code a second time, how to maybe, I think I mentioned this to other people, about telling parents how to change their settings to go into their Gmail accounts or hopefully not still you and Yahoo, right, like that.
Hopefully with that, yeah.
Yes. But that needs to come from, but that should come from the top down to all the parents through a way that could, because, you know, again, if I send to my parents, only go into the parents who have joined Schoology. A lot of them have not joined yet. So it has to come through a way that all parents will get it.
Right.
But I think because there's different platforms out there, you might only get a half report because
Well, this is, but this is like the chatter.
I'm not, I'm not, I know.
In some ways, you guys can't answer the technical part of that.
Right, yeah. Like, I get those emails as a parent from Jupiter as well and it will only list my kids' classes that they have grades in so far, right? So like, when I got the very first weeks, you know, on the first Friday, she only had like three classes listed. And I was like, what are you talking about? Where are the rest of your grades? Well, because none of the rest of the grades have been entered. So I'm wondering if it's that kind of thing? If no grades have been entered for that course, then you don't get anything from them at all? And I don't know if Schoology works the same way.
Well, I can see it on Jupiter if I go on Jupiter. It's the email that just comes.
Right, right, no, yeah. The exact email from Jupiter only says the classes that, and so then therefore, if one of my daughter's teachers is not using Jupiter, I will probably never get that listed.
Right. That's what I'm experiencing.
Yeah. Exactly.
Until the second semester starts, then everyone will be using the same LMS, then it'll be, it'll be much more clear to everyone because we're all in the same age.
Yeah. One of the things that I wanted to mention that I love about Schoology is that, there's some
That's unusual.
When I was typing our, I've typed our math exams, we've done our math exams, semester exams have been online. Typing those on Schoology is heaven compared to what it was when I had to do it on Jupiter Grades through the Juno system. You couldn't do an exponent in math? Like, if I can't put an exponent on my exam? Maybe crazy. And what you had to do is you had to actually type it somewhere else, take a picture of it, insert that picture. And then for every multiple choice answer, you had to do the same thing. It was horrible. So I'm looking forward to being able to use Schoology more effectively because I do know that there are aspects of it that are much, much, much better, so.
And I'm going to chime in here, that that was one of our criteria for selecting an LMS was that it was a really, had really robust mathematical and scientific notation.
The math department appreciates that.
And so, foreign language, math, grammar, and science, we wanted to make sure that the one, and there were two that pretty much had equivalent, but Schoology was one of those.
Yeah, yeah. I have a question. As we approach Jupiter sunsetting and you know that there's a drop dead date now that we are going to be implementing Schoology, are you feeling like you have enough time? Are you feeling like you have enough opportunities for PD to really get caught up? And if we have something that we develop or a mentor teacher can help, you know, other teachers that need a little more support, do you think that would be sufficient for you to be comfortable using Schoology starting January?
I think that you're looking at people who are trying.
Yeah.
So I think for, if you're asking the three of us personally, yeah, we'll be okay. We'll figure it out, we'll be okay. I cannot speak for the teachers that are not using it at all.
And we'll speak to that when we talk about PD. It's a great question, Tristan. We're going to speak to a week to get to the PD part of it.
I talked to a few teachers knowing that I was coming here just to get a sense of what happened. A few of them said, I tried Schoology and I ran into these bumps and the school year's moving, so I just kind of had to go with it. And I think if you kind of take off the support rope, they're going to, they hit those bumps and rather than just leaving it, they'll kind of have to work through it, find a mentor or Nancy or someone, and I coached them, help them through it.
I think if we didn't just switch schools, I think everyone would have been on board with Schoology.
Right, absolutely.
I think it was like, it was like, so hey, I know you're struggling already, but let me just throw some matches. So I think that, so some people, like, I happen to like love change, so I'm like, change, yay! But I think some people are like, slow your roll.
Yeah.
I'm not ready for that yet.
I just got my Lester box and it's delivered.
Yeah.
Thanks, Don.
So I think, so to speak, I think that's why you'll see people still try Jupiter Grades, it's safe, it's comfortable, we know it, we love it.
Right.
We have, I think, a three-year commitment with Schoology, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
So I think, and one thing I noticed, like, and I'm sure Lisa can speak to that, at the conference, like, you're in these rooms with these amazing educators who are doing like next level stuff on Schoology. And they took a poll at one of my sessions, they're like, who's been on there for five years? Who's been on there for three years? And I was the only person in the room like, I'm starting in August! And they're just like, oh my God! You know, because everyone's been doing it for a long time. We're kind of behind on that a little bit, right? But, so from that point, we're going in the right direction, but I think there's so much more that it can be done that I don't even know about yet. And I look forward to learning about it again. The next one, and keeping more of us will go and we'll learn more and then we have to train. We just need time. This Thursday thing with the schedule, you know, we have now shortened our PD time.
Right.
And that is just, and then it's just, there's all these other things we have to do.
Tell it like it is, is that okay? And to some degree, you all said that. And we wanted you to hear what we're hearing. Like, I could have found, it would have been hard because Ms. Marcus, Ms. Marcus just said, oh, there's something that's on Schoology. It would have been harder to find someone who's super Pollyanna about it right now, but that would have been a misrepresentation of what we're getting from the field. We needed you to know where we are right now. So when we come back in January, you see the progress. And this is not just for our board members, it's for the community. So I want to thank Dr. Bregge because he had the idea to bring our teachers here. Usually I do, that's why my presentation would be four, five, eight hours long. But this was really important to have you guys here. Ms. Marcus.
I have a question, basically, not for you guys, but for our TOSAs because it would seem to me that their effective use in the school right now could be to the people who are so resistant to and who do not feel comfortable with it. And I wanted to ask you about how you're feeling about that.
And Gretchen and Nancy, you guys too.
Yeah, I can start off. You're absolutely right. I think that people, if you had the opportunity to work one-on-one and you can show some of the benefits and ways to get over those bumps and how you can find help and the fact that all of the coaches are so accessible and that they have a pretty robust help section on Schoology, if you give them the tools within that one-on-one session, it really does help. And so I was also going to mention that at the elementaries, we have the Wednesday mornings. We have dedicated professional development for technology time that we're using. We had one today.
I have a question.
We also have the personal-professional time, which I'm going to, you know, I'm going to offer time, we can't require that anybody comes, but I can say, you know, there will be a Schoology session. Bring your questions and we can work through them. We also have common planning time. So those are all times when teachers can get help, at least at the elementary level.
Are you seeing more and more different teachers coming or is it pretty much the same?
You know, I was actually surprised. I had teachers that I went in and they had already set up their gradebook, they already were giving assessments. And I was like, wait a minute, you told me that you weren't any good at technology. And so, so they have surprised me that, I mean, I think, I think our level of adoption at elementary is much less than, say, I mean, middle school really has kind of knocked our socks off with how quickly they've adopted. But at the Schoology Next conference, there were a lot of sessions on using Schoology for younger users. So I'm really looking forward to working with the lower elementary and getting them using it.
Gretchen?
Oh, sorry. We were about to add. She's, her school is doing well, so she should To answer your question, I feel that those people, they realize that they know that Jupiter's going to sunset in December and they're working through that. And I, I'm so busy working with the people that are trying to learn it and get up and running that I'm just giving them time for the dust to settle because it was, it's just the beginning of the school year. And I think they know and I know that they're going to be the first people that I started.
I think they don't have a lot of choice and so here's the support that they have and that's my opinion. You can't be resistant to it. You've got to take advantage of it. And I'm hoping that the teachers are because, I mean, I don't have children in the school and I don't have parents that are talking to me about it for whatever reason, because I'm not really a tech savvy person anyway. But I do know that we have these, you know, you guys in the schools, I just think that the teachers need to really avail, I know you avail yourselves to them, but they have no choice because it's going to come and they have to be ready.
And a big shout out to our admin team at the middle school because they have decided to create a Schoology course for the whole staff there. So, and Principal Allen posts his daily notes there and that is his way of communication. So no matter what, even if you don't want to explore Schoology, you're on there every morning to check his daily notes.
Gretchen, I really thought of that excellent point. So during our retreat over the summer, we talked with the site administrators about, this is not a lecture they needed, but we were just trying to empower them with strategies to support their teachers in implementation. And all the research shows that modeling as a site administrator, when it comes to technology, probably anything, but technology in particular is critical. So if I'm not mistaken, all of our site administrators, well, every site has a site administrator who has set up a course. So that's incredibly positive. Mark, me, was in my office in the summer setting this up before we even had retreat. So they are doing their part and I'll talk more about that during my section. Nancy?
So at the high school, there is a big divide because they had the need to immediately get in and start posting grades because parents want to see them. So some teachers did go ahead with Schoology, some, like we said, they hit a bump and they said, well, I have to get these grades in, I'm going to go and use Jupiter. Wasn't a big percentage, but there were some. Wasn't a big percentage, but there were some. But I've met with a lot of teachers one-on-one who have told me, "I don't, I don't understand tech, and I can't do this, and it's very hard." But meeting them one-on-one has really been positive. Every teacher that I've worked with, I've walked away with them saying, "Oh, that wasn't that bad." I heard it was gonna be worse, because they're not familiar, they've heard from other teachers that it was complicated, and they got scared, because they didn't know what it was. And so that one-on-one has been. Yeah, and I'm Nancy, I'm new. So I basically walked into the school and they said, "Here's Schoology, teach the teachers." And it's, you know, they've had a lot of questions, so it's been good. I've been able to get to know a lot of people really quickly.
So Nancy was a coach at another district for how many years?
Seven years.
So she's not a new instructional technology coach, she's just new to the district. I do wanna say that Mark called me, Mr. Mead called me one day to say Bernadette, the relationships Nancy has built in a short amount of time is stunning. I mean, the fact that she's been invited, I'm sorry Nancy, I don't mean, thank you blush, probably. The fact that she's been invited to department meetings, any of us who are familiar with secondary culture, that is no small feat. I mean, I was elementary, but from what I understand, that is no small feat to make that penetrate like that so quickly, like three or four weeks into the school year. So to further answer Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Happer's questions, as a director of the department, I see all the coaches receiving more requests. Like Gretchen has to get up and leave meeting, like my meeting to go meet with a teacher. And they know my rule is if a teacher needs help, Bernadette is like backseat. Same for Lisa, same for Nancy. They are in high demand because of, I mean, always, because they are what they are, but especially because of this. I promised you guys 4:30. Did you wanna add anything?
I think that the teachers who are resistant, and there are, I think it also helps to have those of us who are, you know, dipping our toe into the pool as well. Because maybe if they're, I don't wanna do this, I'm not gonna call the coach, but we're having lunch, and I'm like, "Oh, hey, look, I just figured out this whole thing," that they'll, they're more receptive to the teachers. So I think it is gonna spread, I really do. And, and for, you know, it is more complicated. The fact is, it is more complicated. It's more complicated than the thing I've been doing for the past 10 years. Yes, it is.
My phone is more complicated.
Right, exactly. Which is why I haven't got a new phone in like five years, because I can't learn something new, so.
Curriculum, you know, obligations to do that. I think that's the thing, we just need time. Can you just invent a way to give us time? And all your problems will be solved. That's it, give it your stuff, it's all we need.
That's right.
That's it.
And the whole, the why, you know, those of you who are high school, high school, I just dropped my son off at freshman, for his freshman year of college. And I can say that fortunately, his high school had a robust LMS program. They're using it in college. And so rather than have our kids who don't have that really well-rounded experience with learning online, they have to learn a whole new thing, as well as navigating going to college for the first time, getting away from home for the first time. So for.
And we haven't really talked about the kids and their experience with it. And I think it, maybe that's because it goes without saying, is because a lot of the kids, they pick up on it so much fast. And we do, and like, you know, they come to my class, and my students all came to my class, you know, within the first two weeks. "Oh yeah, so is it gonna be on Schoology? And when are our grades gonna be on Schoology?" And I'm like, "Oh, you know, it's a lot better than I do."
You know, it truly is like getting like a new car, because with all the bells and whistles. And some people are just afraid to tap some of the buttons. And, you know, we had a parent at one of our PTA council meetings just recently, give us an example that it was the first time she received feedback so quickly on a paper. So the teacher had received like a first draft of some writing sample that they turned in, and they actually were able to get feedback through Schoology, you know, right away. And so, so I do think that there is just a lot that we're not aware of. And that, you know, it is overwhelming to people, and, but to know that there is so much more, like with the content piece of it, you know, and with our textbooks and the type of feedback that we can deliver to students. You know, it's, if, upon reflection, you know, I almost wish that we did, we're able to show, kind of begin with the end in mind, with all the things that you can do. But then I also think that that really would've overwhelmed people as well. So, but, you know, we need to keep in mind too, it's not just something that's replacing Jupiter. And that's kinda where a lot of people are.
And I think that if we can show some of the teachers, like, you know, you do a test drive, so you can see what the car can do. And right now, the teacher's like, "Oh, you're just taking my Honda, give me another Honda."
And the cup holders, they're all the Honda's.
No, that's a great example.
Yeah.
And they really have no vision of where it's going.
So I guess that's really the question, is there gonna be anyone driving on the freeway, like, into this experience? Because it's great that everyone gets new Hondas, but if people aren't gonna drive it, you know, we're gonna have a problem, right? Because it'll be a jam.
But I think it's gonna be a slow process.
That's the concern for us, because it'll, it'll come back. I mean, that's the question, right? It's, you know, I've heard so many things, you know, "Why is the board doing this? Why, why are you guys making us do this?" And I'm like, "This came from administration, and we're supporting it, because there's a better way of doing this, and we have a bigger need, because times have changed." But the question is, how do we make sure that the timing is right? Kind of like what Tristan was saying, is January really a true date? Is it a good date? Because if only 25% of the people are gonna be doing it very comfortably, or 30%, 40%, 50%, it's still not 100%. Because we're responsible for everybody. So how do we, this is, this is really like a question for the three of you. As a teacher, as a parent, as someone who sees your students, are we gonna get there in January? Where are people going to be having the same number of output? Are we to expect as an institution, the output that we are receiving right now with Jupiter grades, to that level? I know it can be more significant, but we're dependent on a system right now for communication, for grades, for, are we gonna be there in January today?
Yeah, you hired competent people.
Oh, I know you have.
No, I'm saying, you've all hired really competent educators. You guys are huge, you can put down. But that was your choice to make, and that's why we have this conclusion. But we are very good at what we do, we will learn, and we'll take the time to do it. We just, some people decided they wanted to give themselves a little bit of a month to adjust to new school, and then learn Schoology. And some of us just write it. But the fact that our LMS communicates with like EdPuzzle, and we can get BrainPop, and we can get Placavaya there, and when you, Newsella, when you assign grades, it dumps automatically into there. There's no more inputting of all that to you. Would you just realize the fancy of the Tesla, as opposed to the Honda has to offer, right? I think they'll be all driving like you wouldn't believe on the highway. You just gotta show them all the bells and whistles.
And I think it's gonna be a slow process. And for some people, it's gonna be much faster than others. But everybody is going to do, and, you know, the fact is, is it's about what's the minimum that, you know, that the people are gonna be to do. And they're gonna do, there are some people out there that are gonna be able to do them, that are going to do the minimum required, right? And so then in January, then, we don't all have to be April by January of EdPuzzle and stuff like that. But, you know, okay, y'all have to be able to put your grades on, and, you know, put your assignments on. You know, and, and believe me, if it's, if it's steps like that of the minimum you have to be able to do, oh yeah, everybody in this district who's ever touched Jupiter, come put their assignments on Schoology, you know? And the other side of that is, if we pushed it off, aside from giving it a hard time. If we pushed it off, like, what's gonna change?
You're a pay lord. I know, you're just learning how people are laying.
Right, and, and you know, nothing's gonna be any different. The people who are avoiding trying it out are gonna just, you know, procrastinate even more, and so.
I have a question for you, Bernadette. Do you have, have you figured out what the top, like, 10 skills are that the teachers need to have in order to use it? And then figured out between now and the end of the year, how will you hit those targets? How do you make sure that those teachers, that all of the teachers know exactly what they need to do to hit those top 10 things? And then if people wanna go beyond that, and then wanna do mentoring and sharing and crowdsource, you know, that type of learning, fantastic. But we should at least have like a minimum bar expectation of what it is that teachers can do to properly utilize that, knowing that Jupiter's going away.
And this is why I love study, I mean, a lot of times, "Oh god, study session." But I love study session, because you all asked such great questions. So the answer to that is yes, Tristan. So the coaches and I diagnose like what are the minimum things that teachers should be able to do by January, and that's what they design their professional development around. The high school has been the most challenging for all the reasons Nancy talked about, and the way their PD is. Did you have a student who's not? And the challenge, the challenge of the PD schedule at the high school, that's been our biggest barrier. I wrote that to you guys during Board Connection, and I'll talk more about PD in a little bit. But yes, and that's what the coaches have designed their PD schedules around, their PD plans around.
And then in that same vein, do we also have some kind of a schedule of deadlines for when we're gonna make sure all kids have access to their VHUSD accounts? When we make sure that all of the communication modalities are working together? Like, we have targets already set up, so that we know as we knock them down, and can move further into really fully rolling Schoology out after December's stuff.
So we do have milestones, and the one about, so yes, the miles, the high school email account situation, I shared this in Board Connection, we did not see that one coming.
Right.
The kids were living in Jupiter to the degree that, I mean, one of the assistant principals even said, "I did not understand how many of them had never logged into their district issued Gmail account." So that caused a tsunami of problems at the high school that, to me, really affected the rollout. Josh, would you agree with that?
Oh, I agree, yes.
Yeah.
So, but how you figured that out?
Yes, and that is largely diminished. In large, which is Josh, in large part, I thought I saw him. I see him all the time, so.
Josh is not here.
He's getting ready for tomorrow.
He's getting ready for tomorrow.
Yeah. So in large part to Josh and Mark and Kim's efforts at the high school. They were in classrooms helping kids get it, log into their Gmail accounts. Josh, you know this.
Mark came into my room, and let's, everyone try it right now, let's see what's going on.
Yeah.
Trouble shooting.
And Josh has been in our office, because we share. He's been in our office every day at lunch, with the exception of one day that he had to come here, helping students get on, get into Aries, get into Schoology, get into their VHUSD accounts. And we had a list, we did a, we, there was a survey, and they asked kids, "Are you able to get in? Are you new?" Because that is a different. He has, Mark asked all the teachers if it was possible to stop and have all the kids try to log in, and then they just wrote down and answered the survey, who didn't? And I'm looking here, and well over half of the kids who reported an issue were marked off on this sheet, which means that even more than that, because sometimes they come in and we're, we don't even have time to mark them off.
Just my personal question, were those kids, so if they were asked to do that during class, were those kids that actually have a computer? What about the kids that don't?
We stopped class, and we had every kid that had their phone, or if they came on computers or whatever.
We need to be able to use the phone in class sometimes.
100%. I'm sorry, was that a bad word?
Well, until, until you give my kid a computer, then yes, you need to let her use the phone. She seems to be in that group that never gets one of your phones.
And then they all logged in, we wrote down, and they came up to our, like, the teacher's desk, and they couldn't get it.
Mike's made one point, Tristan, I love how you mentioned having 10 expectations for teachers. My next thing, and this might, I might get trouble, but this is, needs to be accountability. So it happens, like, you guys were all loving this Jupiter stuff, but at my school site, people were barely using it. Like, they wouldn't even post the actual Google Doc, even a PDF of something. They'd say, "Here's your homework." And if the kid actually, sorry, if the kid actually didn't, was absent, well, how do I print it out? Well, you gotta get the next day, get to school. So they're not even using Jupiter to the full capacity. So if you expect teachers to do X, Y, and Z, then you need to also go through and check our Schoology, and make sure we're actually doing it, because no one did that with Jupiter grades. That's it, I'm sorry, my teacher tone, use your teacher voice, I'm so sorry. But I feel like people need to count it. I want people to go, "April, you've done 1 through 10, muscle talk, right? Good." And more, here's number eight, close correction during period three, right?
Yeah, it's a Starbucks gift card.
Yes. Otherwise, if you just, everyone kind of like, then it's just not gonna be where you want. If you want us to be in a certain place, you need to tell us to be in a certain place, by when, and hold us accountable. That's how life works in the big, that's how life works. My personal vision. I'm done, are you guys just thinking of?
No.
You're gonna get a lot of trouble in the teacher's. I'm okay, I'm fine. I believe in accountability, I'm sorry.
I like it.
Across the board, for everybody.
And parents, so we have this for the teachers, do we also have learning targets for parents?
No, that's a great, are you asking for that? So we can do, we can.
Whatever, a drink.
You know, we should admire each other. We require parents, there's certain targets before they were allowed to go into the BB mixer.
Or a free drink, an extra.
Or get like a.
Yeah.
An extra drink. I would've motivated.
That's a good idea, we can do that for, we can create that for parents. We're more focused on the kids and teachers.
Well, you can also structure it through their students, teaching them.
Well, I think, I think the students don't worry, because they're the ones that are responsible for, you know, the input or the output, or whatever's requested them. How are the students doing?
How are the students doing with Schoology?
I would like to ask those two, yeah, head over there.
You know, Ares problems. Um, I've yet to experiment with Schoology too much, but Ares wise, I mean, you have to spend a good five, 10 minutes clicking around and seeing, because it's very different to Jupiter. But other than that, I mean, it, it's really, it's not too bad, I mean.
Similar aspects, it's just in a different place. The cup holder in the car is in a different place and you just haven't got it.
Well done, Karen.
So busy. And it's hard to get used to, I stole my coffee for the first three weeks I'm in car, but.
All I got stained shirts, but it's all right. Get a new shirt.
I asked a few of my students today just to get a sense of where they were with it. And a few of them, they said, why, why are we doing this? And I said, you gotta trust us, and LMS is where you want to be, it's where you've been being college, it's the, it's the future. And they're like, yeah, but Jupiter was great, was, was great, I understand. And so I think they're, they're missing that.
Watch screen, Jupiter is a grade book, and so when you log on, you see the grades, because it's a grade book.
Right.
And, you know, with, with Schoology and any other LMS, the content delivery, that's the focus, rather than, you know, the particular grades.
You guys were incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we have a couple of teams, we have to leave shortly, so I may have to mix things up a little bit. Um, thank you, April, Katie, and Josh, that was fantastic. So we, so that was a teacher perspective. I'm going to speak very briefly about these, um, next points. So I wanted to reemphasize that Jupiter is a grade book, so it's almost like comparing apples and trucks. Um, so, thanks for laughing, Tristan. I'll get funnier as the study session goes on. Schoology is a learning management system, they're completely different things. And, um, I'm going, Destin's going to be so mad at me for this, but I'm going to ask him to do. But, um, he did a great, not, it's not his fault, he's talking to the teachers. Um, he did a great synopsis on the purpose of a learning management system. One of the things, you know, the expression, everything I needed to learn, I learned in kindergarten, which isn't true, but it's a cute thing to say. But what is true in terms of leadership, so much of what I learned was a principle. And one of the things you had to do was look into the future. It was not enough to just think about the present or even yesterday. You had to be almost a futurist and predict what was coming. And, um, I got very good at it. And so, I, I, we could have not done LMS. We, we'd accomplished a lot as a team, um, we could have kind of kicked back and lived off that success, but that would have been now practice on my part. We were already behind with something like this with a learning management system, so we took it on because the future does call for it. So.
... system, but I also came from a district that was one to one for 10 years. So, you know, we are behind that learning curve, obviously, from the implementation of the one to one device, which expands, obviously, instructional materials. An example today alone is, I'm working with our ninth grade biology teachers, I'm being able to get the adaptive online textbook, because the material is newer than our physical textbook in the classroom. Another example is our sixth through eighth grade, which the world's most evil teaches, um, is our social studies textbook. Uh, Mr. Margot, President Margot was actually among the textbook adoption process. And the great part was is the, the textbook, because history does change every single day, it adapts online. So even though our physical textbook in the classroom won't have anything past, say, when we adopted, which was, uh, you know, July of last year, but the online portion has everything that's happened up until current. Um, and, and it also helps us adapt reading level. So just the instructional tech, uh, instructional, educational tech has advanced so much even just before I, you know, was able to give iPads to students 10 years ago. We use a learning management system, which, when you, we taught this administration around the feedback piece. That's the piece that we are missing here, and I think that's where most of us are frustrated. I, just before coming here, sat in a meeting with, uh, parents and families around grading. And their frustration on all of a sudden being blindsided by some grade or, uh, uh, you know, a, a mark on their transcript. But part of it also is just that communication piece that goes back and forth between us as an institution and our stakeholders. And the more transparent we can become in that process, a lot of these conversations that I have on a daily basis with Dr. Brady will go away, in the sense that then our families will feel served and it won't be things happening behind closed doors, it'll be happening out there for everybody to see. I think that's probably the piece that helped me the most in my former life, is a learning management system allowed my parents to be an active family, you know, a family engaged, an active learner in the process of what the students were. Instead of a textbook coming home saying, you know, mom, dad, grandma, help me. They can monitor what's actually PowerPoints to, everything's in one composite folder for that student and that parent.
And just to what, um, Mr. Seaman said, is that here, this is, this is your, this is the school board study session course. Along the side, here is the TEACH TCI, which is the social studies. And so if you, I am obviously not a social studies teacher, but if you have the credentials for it, you just push button and you can see all of your programs and you can assign assessments and homework within Schoology, so that it's more of a one-stop shop, rather than here's another book that you are going to have to open up. It's, it's right there, all of the, all of the work, your notes, your lectures, your text. And, and it, it can be updated much more quickly than the seven-year cycle for a hard, a hard copy book.
And if I could just take you back on that for a second, I was working with a special ed class, um, last week on, the teacher, um, established an assignment in TCI, and her class of eight was able to go in there. One of the benefits of it is that it's adaptive technology, so the students can choose whether or not they want it read to them, or the, or they read the, the text to themselves, it highlights the text for them. Again, it's interactive, there's video that they can watch, the, the, um, follow-up material is embedded in the assignment with a graphic organizer, so the student can, it, it's a one place for that student to help with their organization tools for the content of that, of that specific assignment and material.
I think to answer the question, why are we doing this, somebody had said that before. I think as a district, we should be easily prepared to say, look at our mission and vision statement, because we say achieving college and career readiness. And you can't go to a university now without using an LMS. Um, my son's university uses Blackboard. So if, if they don't learn how to use it, we are failing in what we're actually trying to achieve with our mission and vision. That is actually now part of the curriculum.
That's right.
So we didn't have it before, we have it now, we're transitioning into it. And I think that needs to be kind of a talking point on it, so we don't have to keep answering these questions. Why, what is this? You know, the kids will figure this all out much faster than the adults will. And I think that's the most important part of it, because it's going to become way more important for them to master this by the time they go to college than us. We can trip through this and, and we'll be okay, they won't be. So, um, I think as long as the focus stays on, on the students.
If we didn't do it.
I couldn't have said that better. You actually finished, like, a couple of my slides.
Good.
Yes. Justin raised, he raised a hand response, so I won't talk, man, that's it, well.
No, and, and to think that, uh, I said, Margot is, is exactly that, is that a lot of the post-secondary options will utilize that Blackboard, because they aren't having to have to build, um, in a wide variety. Like, we have to build in chemistry equations, we have to build in algebraic equations and physics equations. And that's one of the most important reasons why when people will say the word, then why Schoology? Not why learning management, but why Schoology itself? And Katie Carter was a prime example of, she's been struggling for years to be able to build within Juno just the algebraic equations at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, not even considering the physics teachers that aren't using it at all at the high school level. And so that was part of the roadblock of providing feedback in life sciences at the high school, is because none of these electronic, uh, uh, tech systems were working in their realm. And now we don't have an excuse in those life sciences, you can build in this realm. We need to have that feedback from those places.
Did high school students get assigned numbers yet? Because I know, like, middle school students came home with a number, right, to sign up.
Nancy, you just raise your hand, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, those numbers are available in Ares, so you can look up your student in Ares and it's in there. And I just finished a form and I'm currently sending it out to the high school teachers, um, just to let them know that if parents are unable to find it in Ares, that they can complete this form, they can have parents complete this form and send it to me. Now, obviously, if 1,300 families send it out, then it will take me some time to get back to everybody. But, um, I'm just going to let them know that it's available, because it's, the quote is tied to the student.
I think this question was more for the students, right? Were you asking how the students?
Oh, the students don't, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, the stu.
Related in the WhatsApp, because I see it pop up at at least three different grade levels, with people sharing, saying, here's how you get to it in Ares, and this is where your students code.
Right, but if you had to send out to everybody, all the parents in the high school, and how to get a child's code, that's fine, I, I, you know, but I don't remember.
You did it to everybody.
So I'll resend it, that's the, I mean, so much was going on, I'll send it again. Um.
So, along those lines, um, we did create a, a student.
The coaches do it.
Student help, help section, like, how to get on and easy steps. The, this is, this pops out to a Google, a Google Doc, which says, our biggest problem has been students going to schoology.com instead of bhusd.schoology.com. If they go to schoology.com, they won't be able to get in. Um, so then there are, there are, like, this is what you see when you get in. Here's a little animated gif. So this is available for students, we have one that's also available for teachers. That has Schoology and Ares, Ares grade book and Ares communications. So the, the, the teacher site is mostly YouTube tutorials on how to create course materials.
This was at their request, they wanted the.
And then this is the parent website that has Schoology, how to add additional children, privacy settings, et cetera, Ares. And then we just added the, we've been having some issues with parents, parent not receiving Ares communications, because it's going to their junkie. So, uh, Christie wrote this whole section on how to make sure that, um, you know, how to, how to make sure that it's getting to you, that the communications are getting to you. So the information is out there. As, and this, this information is also on the district website.
But to the point, though, I think maybe April and Katie mentioned it, it's, it's worthy of rescinding, because we sent it toward the beginning of the school year, you know, parents and kids were getting so many emails that we'll send it again, I'll send it again this week. Um, so as I, as we transition, Gretchen, Nancy, Lisa, would you prepare for the board member training session? As they get ready to come up, um, I did want to share, Destin brought this up a little bit, so I want to speak to it. Once Schoology is fully implemented, we should see instruction evolve in a way that we're. PDFs, we should see a kind of an evolution in instruction as a result of this. And it's not that they're in Schoology all the time, it's how teachers and kids are engaging with content. So that said, um, Gretchen, Lisa, Nancy, do you want to start the board members and community members who are watching? Um, so, Mrs. Mark is.
So, um.
Pass one.
Oh, no, we're not ready to start, Nancy. Not, not hard, like.
Are you dragging?
Okay.
Yeah.
Nancy, we're going to, we're, I just want to give them a quick, Nancy? I just want to give them a quick tour.
So, so we're, so we're, so we'll do it, we'll do what we do with our kids and say, dock it, or put your screens at 45, so the attention is up at, you don't have to shut it all the way, because then you have to restart it.
Okay, so what we have planned for you is we have enrolled you.
We're following.
Yes, you are.
We have enrolled you in a course, so you are in a course like a student is.
Don't you support kids with initiative that just come and dive in and do it?
Well, like Ms. Strachey did this morning, she.
I thought you wanted me to do it.
Uh, so what you're seeing is an actual course, this is what the students see when they enter into any one of their courses. Um, this screen right here is their announcement page, um.
I'm going to go into it as a student.
Okay.
Yeah, go in is my goal.
So, so what you were seeing before was the teacher view, so now this, a teacher can view the course as a student.
So this course, uh, there, there have been folders set up, so, and you're welcome, you have access to this at any time. We have added documents in here, this discussion topic, this is what our high and teaming student already completed today. Um, it's a warm-up activity, it's something that you can give to your, your students or classes, um, to maybe send out, like, how they're feeling today, or, or give a follow-up question for content that they had to discuss further, uh, do for their homework assignment the night before. So, uh, if Lisa clicks on discussion topics, it opens up the assignment, and here was the activity today.
I love that.
Our teachers do, too.
Is that the cabinet?
Yes. I thought I was Dorothy.
Do you want them to do it, Gretchen?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, so you can undock, and you can go into your course.
But should we be following, we're not doing the folder thing?
Not yet, not yet. That's your, that's your assignment piece, we just want to give you a quick tour of the interface.
Oh, I thought, so, okay, I go to Schoology and now on the upper right.
Nancy?
Do you want some to answer the question?
Yes. How did we, isn't it, we go into courses, right?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Oh, up here?
Go into courses?
No, I didn't go into courses, I went to this little thing here.
You're trying to get the work done, too.
Yeah.
We shouldn't have given you your.
Why did it say, it says Schoology?
Well, we're, we're not going to do this yet, we're going to do the warm-up activity first. So if you click on Courses, and click on the Courses, the course image right here, then it will bring you to, this is, this is the stream, this is where all the information and assignments are posted. And we're going to click on Discussion Topics right there. And then you can click on the topic and answer the question.
Click on the topic.
Got to do it again? Did you do it once?
Oh, she did it, like.
Oh, you did it this afternoon.
This morning, yeah.
I feel like this.
Okay.
Okay.
So then you just scroll down.
Scroll down. And then you're going to.
Do I go to the next thing then?
So now, um.
So I posted my response.
You posted, you can reply to people who have already posted, to, and when we're teaching, when we're.
Why?
We talk about what are good ways to give feedback, like, good job, doesn't open a dialogue.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's see.
Or it doesn't start a discussion.
So now, so here.
So it always suggests that they, that they ask a question, or they make a comment, rather than just say nice, or they're just.
Right here, and you can edit your comment.
We get a lot of those.
Well, your comment was ten minutes.
I can't see your comment. You only think, okay.
You might need to refresh. Oh, look at that.
And then so on. So, you know, even if kids say something, and they're like, oh, I should have said something else.
It's kind of, but nobody, nobody has been taught how to give good feedback. So this might help social media.
I get yelled at by my wife about that.
Oh, you know, I actually clicked on Dorothy when I did it, thinking that Dorothy would come up or something.
Oh, the.
Like, I thought the Dorothy face was gonna come out, so, get it?
I felt like Dorothy just helped me get to the yellow brick road. Okay, we can move on, I think they're getting the idea, and they're getting into the feedback piece.
Refresh and look at my comment on Nancy.
How do I see the response?
You know, the quiet kid is not, is not as concerned. This is nice and sweet, but you can respond to those quiet kids.
What, you got stock in that?
I take it every day.
Isabel didn't help me find the yellow brick road in the way.
I felt like Dorothy this morning, and lost.
I don't have everybody in.
You might have to refresh.
She needs to refresh.
No, I'm Dorothy, right there, yeah.
Oh, there's Kristin.
Should we get started?
I thought we already had.
Oh, okay, sorry.
What is this, just a, are we on deck here?
Somebody's telling me I do try to cryotherapy, is that? It's about to get really intense.
I suggested maybe, um, if you try to cryotherapy.
Okay, so again, this is, the, the course has been arranged in folders. Again, we kind of created, we created this for. The student.
And so you are seeing this from the teacher view, this is the teacher view, here.
Can I do the next one? I have this one. Oh, yeah.
So what should we be doing now?
Okay, so.
I'm gonna go as Michael.
Okay. So we can go ahead, and what we created for you in that folder are task cards. And actually, this is what we did for two professional developments back in, in April. For, over two of those periods where these teachers have their professional development trainings. We created task cards similar to this, where they were working either with their departments or their team, and learning the context. We created six for you, so if you would like to go ahead and start working on.
That's in the mini PDF.
Those tasks, yes, one of those is in the mini.
So one is in mini, one is in, okay.
But your tasks are right here, the mini PDF one is actually, was more geared for.
So we're not doing this one?
Yeah, you want to do that one. Is this a competition, Gretchen?
No, we did that.
Okay, we took that part out.
We did that to the.
We did that with us.
Right, that was.
I went and did this one here.
We already did that one.
Well, we did, yeah. That was, no, we didn't do that.
No, I think you started that, and then.
You told me to stop. So now I'm at the App Center icon, I've done that.
Where do we go, where do we get into the app center? So we're gonna click the Schoolagie. Oh, well, you're already there, so, okay. The App Center, those four squares. And then you can go, these ones are already loaded, but you can click on App Center and add different ones. So these are some of the apps that we're suggesting that teachers add. These are, these are all, those are all available, yeah. And you want us to include a new one? Yeah, so you might try Google Drive Resources.
I like how I'm doing, I'll do this one. Can I try this one? You want us to do this one?
You can do it.
Do you want our kids on YouTube?
They were super competitive.
Is there a list now of, so we did all this, right?
Yep, so now go to test.
No, no, what I'm saying is.
Select the app.
What, what, once I click on the option, what's different?
So what happens is when you go to your, your resources. For example, if you added the Google Drive, you can go down and get apps, and this will.
Oh, these are the ones I added.
This will access your Google Drive, so anything that you want to.
Create a group.
Okay, now I can, so one is this place to shop for it, and here's a place to use it.
If I scroll down, can I?
Yeah, I added more than that.
That showed up, yeah. Maybe it takes a while for it to.
Drive for assignments, that's used when you actually create an assignment, when you use the resource app?
Oh, they're not all gonna show up in that app?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, that's why.
You can go to the next task, and create a group.
Okay, let's do that then.
So we're here, so you have groups. Remember, you have about seven minutes for the rest of the tasks.
Yeah, how would that work if I told you that?
What'd you say?
What if I said that to you next time, you do a present?
I was wondering, so, okay, so I have the one for our little exercise here open, but I also have mine open. And when I go to Groups, I can't join, it didn't give me like a, well, that's new, that actually wasn't there before.
You created one? You created a, oh, you're in your.
Oh, this is the other thing, too, is that when I go into Tristan.
What's our team name?
No, this would be the group's name.
You're dragging me down here.
I'm sorry.
What do you want to call our group?
I'll do this. All right, yeah.
You can create a group. You can invite each other, so.
Yeah, that's good.
No, only one person has to create it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you're gonna invite the other. Okay, cool, you go ahead and invite me.
Access code, is it?
That's more than ever whisper.
Yes, exactly. So I'm gonna say after this.
Yeah, there's your access code.
You guys will be following up with them, too.
So then, yeah, so you must have already clicked it, yeah. So then you need to give access code to your team members. So, eighteen, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. How do I do that? It says, okay. So you, you did that, because that was in your setting.
Do we need a category?
So then the access code, so you would need to give this code.
Okay, let's just do department.
Yeah, sure, so, share.
You have to use these, you can't write in your own, like, say, school board.
Got it?
No, it doesn't say.
Can I send her, send her this code?
Just probably read off her.
Okay, all right, it's M seven D two. Dash nine P six eight, dash R X K K D.
Would be either via email, or since you're sitting right next to her, or you.
Nope, no, M seven nine two.
She could copy it right off your computer, but the access code.
Last, R X K K D.
The update field, I'm really not.
No, M, I put N, hold on.
I don't need to really have people.
I should use my M as in Mary.
Yay, we did it.
Only thing you would need to see is that it makes somebody an admin if they join.
All right, next.
But yeah, you don't really need to, you can try, you can try some of the other things.
So, uh, and for that picture, the blue picture there.
B H U S D dot Schoolagie dot com.
So this tab right here, Resources, that's like your, your digital filing cabinet?
Select Resources, select Add Resources.
You need to type it up here, because it will come up.
Add Folder.
You don't have to do all those, you can do one or two.
Is it here?
Oh, so we're just gonna create a folder? Okay, so I'm gonna create a folder, um. What'd you do? Jeff Lyman, Jeff Lyman, you do Jeff Lyman folder?
There, I got a nice picture.
The Flying Dutchman?
I'm gonna buy it there.
Add Resources.
So you just click on the folder, because you're gonna add your name in it, and then go to Add Resources, and you're gonna choose Add File.
Wait, am I supposed to add the file, too, or are we?
No, this is the next thing we're doing.
No, I know, but I didn't do it in mine, you only did it in yours. Am I supposed to?
Didn't you create a resource? In the last one?
She can create one now.
Oh, oh, you create a folder, yeah, you can create a folder.
Tristan, do you want to see my?
Oh, you're just gonna go, okay. Yep, there you go. So you're just gonna go to a task file, and pull.
I did it, sure.
To put into that folder.
Uh-oh, I spelled it wrong. Can I?
You wanna take a public data?
How do I add it?
Yeah, you don't have to.
You have to use that one?
Edit?
You don't have to, unless you like it.
So you're gonna go back to.
So now what does that tell me?
Go to Resources?
So this helps when, when people are.
There's a little gear over here? Edit?
Got it. I'm like, my M's and my N's are not working so well.
If I'm in multiple groups, this is a way that I can just really see which group it is, because I can see the different pictures. So if it were, somebody kids have like sports team, or something like that, so maybe if I'm on the basketball team, that's actually a picture of a basketball.
Now you're just adding a folder into, document into that folder?
Any of these things?
File?
My chances are, we'll probably never use a.
Then attach a file, I don't know if you have something.
I'm your.
I have enough trouble.
I have images, pictures, hold on.
I mean, I, I don't have kids in school.
There we go.
Okay, so there we go.
Well, maybe they'll come home from Warner Avenue and tell me.
Okay, but it says add two resources.
Well, it's one here, one here.
There you go.
Okay.
No, I'm learning another.
There, I created it. Is that it?
Are you doing all?
Well, it does say every group member, at least two, but.
Uh, well, see.
That's what you're getting.
I like Resources.
She only gave me seven minutes. Yeah, it's like calendar icon.
She's very competitive.
They're done? Oh, my God.
Is it seven minutes?
So, let me ask this question, can I, since I have two accounts now, one I signed on, can I get rid of one and use one for everything?
Sure, you can, I didn't know if you wanted to, because you had your parent account and.
Well, are we gonna be using the board account for anything else at this point, or is it just for training?
If you want to create a board group, you're, you're welcome to do that.
Oh, that's cool.
Well, he's got us on Google stuff right now, so I don't know.
Google Talk, the two together. You can migrate your Google.
We'll see if.
Incredible modeling.
Or hold on to it, to see if this is accessible.
I think later we can merge if you want to. It's a calendar app.
All right.
Uh, right here. Mrs. Happer, Mrs. Marcus, is it okay if we move on?
Yeah.
We'll give you the task cards and finish it home.
I'm done.
If you so desire. I hope you enjoyed that.
This was pretty cool, very helpful.
Well, I'd like, we kind of, did we learn this today as a student or as a teacher?
No, students.
So this is about how students are gonna be using it?
You are in as a student.
No, I mean, these tasks, are these things that students would be doing, or teachers?
We've done it with teachers inside administrators.
Which are more teachers, just to give you an example, this is one of the PD professional development activities that we did with teachers. We gave them, we grouped them, gave them task cards, and let them do some exploring with a certain, you know, framework. So this is, this is all, you were asking it out, like, what's the, what are the ten things a teacher should be able to do? And these are some of the ten things.
All right.
And at least everybody who was there that day at my school did it. And enjoyed it.
Did you want to add something, Gretchen?
I'm ready, I'm covered.
Awesome. So we would love additional opportunities to take you all deeper as the months pass by. I mean, this might be enough for now. And then we also invite you to, to join any of the PDs that the coaches facilitate at the various sites. That might be another lens into what's happening. So I feel like we've covered this. So now, Schoolagie has been incredibly responsive.
Okay, so we've had a lot of feedback from the high school about the difficulties that they've had, and I've worked with teachers. Schoolagie has been really good, so what we've done is we've kind of, we've categorized the issues. And some of them were things that were totally doable, but teachers didn't know how to do them. So that is an issue where we need to communicate better, or provide more information to teachers. Some of them are things that are just different, you know, it's like, well, this car has the wipers on the steering wheel, and I liked it better when it was on the dashboard, but I'm just gonna have to learn to do it on the steering wheel, because that's how. Pass back. But even when all those things have been working, there have been a few unknown errors. And so Schoolagie ran a report last week, and they're going to run another report this week and compare to see if the errors persist, and to see if they can identify what is causing them. So that's supposed to happen this week, I think it's tomorrow, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Nancy, would you forgive me, please, I'm sorry. Well, remember, did you receive the PDF of the, I just thought about this, the hyperlink was in the document, but yours is a PDF, so I'll send you the link to this, so you can have, have this list for yourself.
And we are updating this, you know, ongoing, so if you.
It's a living document.
It's a living document.
You should send it in Schoolagie.
That's exactly what I'm going to do.
Absolutely. Co-teachers are being dropped, so, for example, special ed teachers need to be in courses with the teachers that they're co-teaching. And they keep getting kicked out, so Schoolagie has two solutions, but their, their engineering team is investigating which of those two will be the best solution for us. Viewing stats, so what we've discovered is that when courses are linked, because teachers often teach more than one section of the same course. So instead of having them to write the same assignment three times, if they're doing three sections, linking courses allows them to do it once, and it sends the assignment to all three of their courses, so it saves work. Then after students get grades, they can, after they give grades to students, they can look at statistics. But the statistics right now cannot be broken down by section. So I can know that overall eighty percent of my students did well, but I can't see if period one aced it and period four really needs some more support. So they're working on breaking that up for us. This is just a visual cue, when Schoolagie is talking to Ares. But wouldn't the teacher know? They know, but sometimes seeing those details is really eye-opening. And once teachers start to really use Schoolagie the way it should be used for, you know, not the way that it should be used, the way that it can be used, I guess is a better term. If I'm doing, say, an assessment within Schoolagie, and I can see. If I'm doing, say, an assessment within Schoology, and I can see that both of my classes did about the same, but maybe period one missed a lot. A lot of kids in period one missed a specific question, whereas period four, they got that question, but they missed a different one. So their results could be the same, and yet I need to focus my instruction differently for the two sections when I'm reteaching information. This is just, they need a visual symbol because Ares and Schoology are both very secure systems. And so when we're putting information from Schoology into Ares, it takes a little bit of time for that communication to happen. And teachers are clicking the button and thinking that it has happened, when in fact it hasn't because it takes time, and so they navigate away from the page before the information transfer is complete.
That's like that little.
The little, like, sometimes when you click and you see a little circle or something going. There isn't any of that. There's a little tiny thing on the bottom that no teacher I've ever shown it to has seen before. They're like, oh, I didn't see that. So we're asking them for some other kind of visual symbol so that teachers know and understand. Adding and dropping students in Ares. When teacher, when students change courses, they are not automatically taken out of a teacher's. Information on the students' grades, what they've done, to that teacher before you remove them from your gradebook. Sometimes teachers, not in our, I'm not sure in our district, I'm relatively new, but in other districts, sometimes teachers grade students who are not on their roster because they're special ed teachers, or they're art teachers, or it's some other reason. So Ares asks you to manually update your gradebook, and it's just a click of a button. It's not complicated, but it's something that our teachers haven't done before. So we're trying to see if we can automate any of that for them because in the past Jupiter grades was always automatically updated with the rosters. And then if you scroll down, the other challenges were things that were added yesterday afternoon during a secondary education committee meeting. So I, we haven't really had a chance to address those. So only see top half of student names. I have to actually see what she's talking about before I can see if that's something that we need to refer to Schoology. We did separate fall semester and spring semester for grading purposes because the way Schoology was set up for a year meant that a student's grade would look just the way it normally would up until December. But coming in January, it would average in everything because it would be averaging the grade over a full year, which is not what we wanted. So we changed it to fall and spring, but it's still showing an overall grade, and we don't want parents to be confused. We can ask teachers to turn that off, but asking, having every single teacher do it is challenging because everybody has to go in and do it for every single course, and that's not something we want to ask our teachers to do. We want to find a way to do that automatically. Or to, for us to be able to flip a switch and turn it off for everybody. So we're going to ask Schoology to look at that. I'm not sure about this one. One teacher using two platforms and grades don't match. That was somebody who said they were putting grades in Schoology slash Ares and in Jupiter, and they didn't match. And that could be human error, that could be a way, that could be something else. We have to see what it is before we know what to do. Summary report for grades, that was what, some, I don't remember who, but somebody asked about it. I think it was you. So you can see grades by clicking on each class, but we're going to see if there is some kind of report that they have or that they can create so that parents can click and just see all the grades. Yes.
That is a feature. That's the setting that you could set up in the parent account where you, you want a weekly or daily summary on the student, you can get that.
Yes, that is, that's true, but can the students see a summary report also? And teachers also want to see that. But you're right, the weekly email digest for parents, they, it's already there. Right?
It's not just a weekly email. It's when you go into Schoology and you're looking at all the courses, you can see the grade next to each course, not have to click on it to see the grade. So that's the students. So that's how they.
So that's what we want to see.
But not in a separate report, like in the actual, when you go and look at your courses.
Right, so we're, so we're going to find out about that.
What about if you want to communicate, like with a teacher, if you're a parent or if you're a student? Where would you go?
At the top of Schoology, there's a message right there.
Do the students, have the students been taught this? Because I did hear a lot of students, a lot of students wrote to me and said, I don't know how to communicate my teacher in school today.
Inconsistently, I think. That's what I was saying before, is that my daughter has two of her teachers, but not even all of them. So.
That's what I'm saying, like, there seems to be a question mark around that question. I mean, I don't know, like, I don't know if students have been told.
So we can better communicate that to the kid. I would go through the site.
They're like, we know how to use it, but how do you communicate? I can't find teachers.
And I'm like. There's a way to solve that.
There is a way to solve. I can tell you that at the high school, we did ask teachers what they would be using for communication.
If I'm a student and if I'm logging in, if I'm logging in, I should be able to see my classes, my teachers. You should be able to, I mean, there should be something like what Tristan was saying on the other, on the other side of the user, right?
Right, so when a student logs in, if you can, can we log in as a student?
Teacher?
If you call your courses.
So not, not by clicking on the teacher? That's what I'm trying to say.
So here, they can track that.
Okay. All right, so here, let's go back to the thing. So just to sum up, I do want to point out that these seem like a lot of challenges. Here, go up to the top, please. But we actually have resolved a lot of challenges as well. So Schoology has been really responsive. We've figured, we've figured out problems of incorrect courses. And the year-long grading period, we fixed. The misaligned courses, we fixed. The math notation, people couldn't find. So there are a lot of things that we fixed. We're going to be communicating that with staff. If, things that, because the math thing, we just found out today where they could, how they could do that. So we're going to be sending out information to staff. At the high school, I send out a weekly, a weekly newsletter to staff, and I always include something about Schoology. Information to their staff, they send it to me. And some things Bernadette sends out to everybody, so we're communicating as much as we can.
And also, we're, the coaches were not standalone. Like Nancy had a, had a PD at the high school. We all came to support the high school teachers with that. I had a PD this morning, Nancy came and supported me with that. So, so we all, it's like better together, you know? I learn from the things that she's doing, she's learning from the things that all of us are doing. So the, you know, anytime somebody figures something out, we communicate it to the whole group.
So board members and community members, we wanted to share this with you. And board members, you'll have a link to this, just so you know what's going on when you hear feedback from teachers and students and parents. You can go and say, okay, they know about this challenge, it's in the resolved section or it's in the unresolved. You know that if it's in the unresolved, we are working on it with Schoology and/or Ares. So you have a running record of what's going on. I want to thank Nancy for putting this together too. Great job. For the help with all the coaches. Okay, we're going to, absolutely. I'm trying to get you out of here at 6 o'clock. I'm trying to do.
Please.
Yes, sir. So Ares gradebook and, Ares gradebook and Ares communications update is pretty straightforward. Not unlike Schoology, we officially transitioned to those two things or tools in January. And Ares gradebook, just in case it's not publicly known, Ares gradebook is the gradebook of record with the state. So that is a non-negotiable. And Kristy Jump, Kristy is our Ares queen. She's known throughout the state. She's been asked to present in conferences. Don't look bashful because you love it when I call you that offline. So she really is expert in this system, and she's been doing a lot of work with individual parents. Kristy, would you speak to the requests you've been receiving from parents?
Rebecca Starkins and I set up, or well, she actually set it up, but a form on our website so that we could ask parents that were, because we were receiving feedback that we were having parents that weren't receiving our emails. So we put out this, this form where people filled it out. And to this, to date of today, we've had 57 emails that come, because it comes as an email. So I've been addressing those and adding and fixing people's email addresses and phone numbers and.
Just mention up on that because that's really important. Many of the parents who were not receiving email communication from the district had mistyped their email address in Ares, and they didn't realize it. So they're thinking, we're not communicating with them or something had happened. But they, we, for example, we would have AOL.net instead of .com. They left the whole lot of .com.
Yeah, or .con, C-O-N. There was a lot of .cons. And so some of those, I would go through the, the Ares reports from Ares communications of all of the bounced back emails. Some of those I fixed. But I mean, it was a mixed bag of, because it wasn't just Ares communications that people were having issues with. There were a lot of different things. Some of them I had to forward to the school sites because if I didn't, if the parent wasn't in there, I wasn't going to add that because I don't know what that family situation is.
Right.
So I would forward that to the school sites. There were many things that were fixed. I sent, I've made several more instructions, and I'm working on one right now with the weekly progress reports, because that was one of them. So I've been, I make these like very simple, here's a screenshot with what you do underneath of it. So it's not like it's a, like you have to read a whole lot. Most of my stuff, I'm a visual person. So most of mine has a visual picture. So those are the types of things that we've been doing. I created a new instructions on how to, for parents to, how do you access the Ares gradebook? So I've been emailing those back. Bernadette and I are going to work on getting a, updating our website to add these extra pieces in for our parents to be able to use. We're trying to make it as, as user-friendly and easy as possible. Ares is easy to use, but just like people have been saying, if you've, if you've always had your Honda and now all of a sudden you've got a Tesla, there's a few differences between your 2015 CRV Honda that I have and a Tesla. So you just have to get used to where those buttons are, and that's the big difference. We've been using Jupiter for a really long time. Jupiter, the, one of the other issues with Jupiter is people, and this is the biggest problem that we've had, is that parents could just say to the teacher, here, add my email. Well, now it's nowhere in Ares, it's only in Jupiter. And that's the biggest problem, is trying to gather those email addresses. And I had, years ago, I tried to get, and I went through and input emails for parents trying to get that information in there. And so that's, that's been the biggest hurdle, is trying to get the information from parents.
So part of what we're trying to communicate is that I'm incredibly proud of our team because they are so responsive. Everything else is off-deck. As you could imagine, we have a lot to do as a technology department, but our singular folk I, well, those contradict each other. Our folk I are Schoology and Ares. I mean, that's, I'm getting one-on-one done, which I'll talk about in a second. But we want to give you an update on the support that we've been offering parents. And there are videos on the parent website that the coaches and Kristy created to help them navigate Ares. Could we move on?
Have you had a parent?
Training yet? Not yet with the staff. They was.
I was just wondering.
I am going to say that Gretchen has had, done some pop-ups, some pop-up trainings at the middle school.
Yeah, back to school.
That was awesome.
And she, I think she also did it during the PK meeting. And there are other times where she's offered that.
But Ms. Happer, they are coming. The parent ed, the parent eds, we've been, we're kind of short-staffed, which is part of our challenge.
And I think tomorrow, you know, it's back to school. At the high school. And so if there's any, like, little information you can give back to the parents too? Like, like how to log in or just the real, for the students, you know? Popping up.
The Schoology and Ares help sites, we could probably have a handout with the URLs on those.
Can I step way outside into the social media world and say, can you guys do like a Facebook Live event so that parents can watch it and then ask questions, type them as they're watching it, and then get the answers? I mean, not everyone will do it, which is probably better. You don't want everyone to do it at the same time. But at least those who are involved in that social media world will be able to get some of their answers that way.
Yeah, I love it. And I'm sorry, I was saying Schuman Walker, I said a Walker Schuman. Rebecca, correct. Okay. So I'm ready, Lisa, thank you. So if it pleases the board, I'm going to talk more about this during the presentation in a couple of weeks. But a lot of talk about take-home and all of that, as you know. We suspended take-home and BBMS because of the weight of the laptops and the kids' safety and health come first. So that was not an issue. But across the district, there's been concern that we might do that across the district from teachers, parents, and some students. So wanted to address it a little bit. We're going to go more deeply into it in the presentation in a couple of weeks. I'm ready, Lisa.
I also want to, about that, I was talking to my niece who is at Madero Canyon School in Mossburg. And they're having the same problems we are.
Weight in the backpack?
They weigh in the backpacks. Now they're, now they're working on checking out lockers to help it. So it's, it's, the world of not using lockers and getting laptops didn't really meet on the same plane at the same time. And now everybody's having to pivot, which is natural and okay, and we need to do it. But I just wanted to say, we're not alone.
Yes.
Okay?
Good to know. Isn't that where you came from, Nancy? Yeah.
That is where I came from, and there, if that is an, I don't doubt that that is an issue, but nobody had mentioned it last year that I heard of. It, it really hadn't been a problem. The laptops are pretty light. I think they're probably about the same as here. But yeah, I hadn't heard of that. They, they had an issue with the elementary school. Some parents felt that their students weren't ready for the responsibility of bringing the laptops back and forth. And so third grade did wait to bring them, to send them home. And then they asked for individual parent permission if they thought that their child was responsible enough to bring it home. Because, you know, if you're nine, maybe you're not. But I hadn't heard that. I mean, maybe it's something new with.
It was just out of my, conversation with my niece.
Yeah, maybe it's something that just came up this year. Or maybe it was something that happened last year. I was mostly in the elementary realm last year, so.
And more information will be in Board Connection. I just don't want you surprised. We've given you enough surprises.
Information, is there going to be any kind of survey on how many students have laptops that they use at home?
Yeah.
Because I don't think, I don't think every student.
Right, and that is technically, that, that's very difficult for districts to do BYOD because first of all, we're not allowed to alter their devices in any way, and pop-ups and viruses and all kinds of things. But I'll, I'll talk to Dr. Breckie Wilson about that.
So it's not, for me, it's not the one-on-one?
Yes.
Take-home? Take-home for me is a big issue. I actually think that would result in more damage because you're carrying it, you drop it in your car, it's, you know, whatever. If we have so many students in our population that have devices at home, I'm not saying don't have devices for them to use at school. I'm not saying they should use their home devices at school, let their devices of their own stay at home and have devices at school they can use. But they don't need to take them back and forth. As we're talking about so much today, Schoology is in the cloud. They can access it from anywhere. And so we shouldn't need to have. And so we shouldn't need to have devices going back and forth.
Yeah, I think, I think the success is the concept of one-to-one with devices, not take home. I think, I think.
We need to uncouple the two, I think.
Right.
There are instructional reasons for take home, whether you're in a one or not district. So if we could talk about it a little bit more.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that. I'm sure there's a reason.
There is, there is a reason. And we've talked, and parents can always opt out. So we never, it was never mandatory. And just so you know, at the start of the year when parents did data confirmation, this was the number of parents who decided to opt out. There was no pressure and the number of parents district-wide who opted in. So that's them knowing that they, knowing that they could opt out.
But as a parent individually involved, one at that, I didn't know that you could opt out. Because I would have opted out because we have devices for all of our kids.
Well, I take it back.
Just so you know.
Where are we going to be with technology? But I do think it's important that we do check out the computer to a student so that it's not a generic computer that's being given to a student either. Because they do need to be responsible for what's on it.
Yeah, and that's what we're going to be talking about. So we open that, it's at the pleasure of the board and the community, but it's incumbent upon us to share the information that we have access to. Okay, Lisa. You can kind of probably stand, tell where we stand as a team in terms of take home. And we could have had more, but. So Lisa, I'm ready. Okay, so Wade, you've been so patient. Thank you for waiting. And Karthik, who, Karthik, I'm going to embarrass you now too. But board members and community members, you might know that the district, the DOIT team, the part that Karthik works on, he's the only person working three jobs right now. And he does it with a smile. He does it without complaint ever. Not, not one time. And he deserves to be publicly acknowledged for that. Mr. Karthik. I do not know how he's doing it. I have zero idea. And I talk to him all the time. And I don't want to know, frankly. We keep it secret. So I'm ready, Lisa. So we wanted, last session, Ms. Hacker asked some really great questions around funding. Are some things bond fundable or some, you know, or some not? So met with Mr. Yeah, so this is pretty consistent.
Fifteen thousand less than your.
Because we moved that fifteen thousand to the next one. Because it was not bond fundable and was more, it's ongoing. So these are, and I know I've spoken to you about these before, but wanted to bring it up again. Karthik, do you want to give a high-level bird's eye view of why these are important from your perspective?
Sure.
I'd love to put a person on the slide.
It's okay. So the data center power upgrade, you know, we've been waiting for a long time. We are not able to properly distribute the power in our data center.
Did you say, I'm sorry, recite?
In our data center. In our data center. And, you know, we want this to be done pretty quickly.
Well, do you know what a data center is?
So data center is like a IT hub. All our, all the data has been centralized and it comes here, then it goes out to the internet. And this is where we, you know, we store the data, we filter the internet. You know, we give access to our students and staff to a lot of our resources. So that's in the district office. It's not built for the data center. It's been, you know, we've been using it like that for a long time. We want some, we're, we want to hire like a vendor who knows about power and, you know, electricity to come and, you know, do some modifications in our, you know, using our devices. They want to, because every single rack is not arranged for proper power. So, you know, that's the cost and we wanted it done quickly. And the next server upgrades.
Forgive me, Karthik. So if something were to happen with the power there, we could experience a catastrophic data loss or breach. So Karthik's point about, and when I say catastrophic, I mean catastrophic. So Karthik's point about the fact that in the data center, we shouldn't say where it is, right?
No, no.
So, I mean, he said the general location. But we could show it to you all one time if, if you were interested in seeing it. It, that, where it is, is it was not built for, for that kind of thing. So as is the case at most of our sites, like our, our different technical rooms, and I'm just using that term for laypeople, are in spaces that like we would have, that the custodial staff would have had. Because of when the building was built versus when technology came on the scene. This is not the case at HM. I have to make a, I have Invisalign. That's why I sound differently than I usually do. I just wanted you to know. Kristi said I sound differently and I can tell. Okay.
Well, the rest of them are like upgrades. We are trying to do it because, you know, server upgrades that are like seven or eight years old, support isn't available from the manufacturer. So if any part goes out, we got to actually replace the server. And also we want to consolidate all of our servers. That's a server upgrade. BV is moved to the middle school. So we wanted to upgrade the fiber from a, to a newer version. Apple server is just, you know.
One thing, Karthik, didn't we upgrade BV over the summer?
I thought we did.
Yeah.
No, we didn't upgrade the fiber. We actually upgraded to the wireless. We upgraded the Beasonics. We added Wi-Fi. We upgraded our public address system.
But we added, there were also the wireless.
So the Apple server is the same thing. We have all the Apple servers to update our iPads, apps and everything. We wanted to upgrade that. The SysLog appliance is, was recommended by our, the security consultants. We were using previously, I don't know whether I can say the name, I zero. They actually recommended us to have this appliance so that we can have, to see all of our security vulnerabilities in our devices at one place.
Is that what you have here, Lucy, or is that something that we have?
Yes.
In the center?
Yes.
I would, I would recommend confirming with the new team that is completing this work on the security center if they still require this.
Or would recommend that.
Recommend it, yeah, recommend this one.
Make sure that's.
Make sure it's, everybody's in sync on that.
Okay. And this is informational. I'm actually bringing it in three weeks, so we'll have the answer before then.
Great.
Okay. All right, next slide. So this is what I was speaking, and this is a $15,000 difference. If we was able to negotiate a slightly cheaper, or less expensive is a better way to put it, rate if we go ahead with a three-year versus a one-year. That's why you see the difference in the number for light speed. The light speed is a non-negotiable. It's our district filter to protect the kids. So that's why this number might be different from what you saw a few months ago. And then to Mr. Margul's point, we moved the 15,000 over here to the slide.
Is this general fund or?
Yes.
About that absolute endpoint management.
Yes, and I wanted to talk about that.
Please.
So that's the, the first one. And that's basically our insurance and tracking for devices in case they're stolen. And if everyone remembers from our last session about this, Mr. Margul brought up the point, do we really need it? Is it more expensive to have it than if we were to lose a couple of devices, basically?
Yeah.
I don't know why I always speak that because it's on the, you know.
You don't want to.
Well, you know what I'd like to do? This is a security issue. So let's defer that part of the conversation to a closed session.
Okay, that's perfect.
Cover that.
Thank you.
But I still want to revisit this, okay?
Yes.
And if you want to give us a general overview on why you think it's important without going into details, that's fine. We can save it for.
Thank you, that's a perfect suggestion. So we originally put it on the devices to do our due diligence and that's prevention to that. So we'll talk about it more later. But these are the ongoing pieces that aren't going away and are not bond fundable. That aren't, that would be new costs that are not currently in the tech budget. Well, before I say that, Karthik, do we pay for any of this out of our, we paid for it all out of the rollout last year, correct? So that none of it came from the tech budget. So we'll talk more about this in a few weeks unless you have questions now. But I do not want you surprised in a few weeks.
My question is, are any more of these things also able to be paid out of developer fees?
Not really, because they're going to continue.
These are all license renewals. Yeah, they're all license renewals.
Do you need budget for this? One more time. Is this budgeted for?
Not currently.
None of this is clear.
Okay, Lisa. So we've been asking questions the entire time. Oh, five minutes. Are you ready, Mr. Margul?
Sorry.
I'm doing fine.
Thank you. So, no, I wanted to end on time. I want to thank you for your attention. We covered so much today. It was so, it would have been easy to get tired and fatigued with all of this and you did not, and I appreciate that very much. More to come in about three weeks, in case you didn't get enough tonight.
My questions were more about like the.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Hacker.
I guess you guys answered the first two, but how about the site administrators? I mean, because I know that we have, we have assistant principals, let's say, who are very responsible for the entire grade level, right? Let's say the middle school. So are they making use of Schoology or is it just teachers at this point? Because how can they, how can they fully, you know, look at Schoology if teachers aren't?
Mark Meen set up that includes both of the district folk I, Schoology and Formative Assessment. And so he has set up a plan. And the course that you were in, each folder was a topic area. The way he set it up, and that's another one of the beauty, beauty parts of Schoology is you can set it up how you want to. And so he set it up, his monthly topic areas. And you can see these are grayed out and they're unpublished. So our, our fast finishers can't go in and do all the work ahead of time. So it's released as, as he wants it. Mark, not Mark, Chris Regan has set up a Schoology course and a group at Horace Mann. And I'm pretty sure that Sarah also has.
She has.
And Gretchen already said that Kevin's using it to do his daily notes.
But I would assume that at some point, maybe this is more pedestrian, you're going to, you're going to go into the system and be able to pull reports.
Oh, analytics, like data analytics.
But you won't be able to do that unless everyone's fully using it at the same level.
Okay, I got what you're asking.
Same variables, is what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
Totally, 100%. That's ultimately my, my want out of, at tech for services is that teacher accountability piece is where you can see how many visits, Lisa's actually going, navigating there now is we can see who's been logged in, how many opportunities have been utilized. But also we can go and access and get inside their course, which I don't have access to that now from an accountability standpoint. Just knowing that I can go in and look at their grade books and I can go and look at some of the literature and some of the materials that they're posting or using in their classes. So that's the nice part because before it's always these different systems that I would have administrative access to.
But the expectation of every single person is going to be trained. Everyone will be using it. So from teachers to every administrator, the expectation is every employee will be responsible for using Schoology.
Right, so we shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a barrier then if we want to, you know. I guess the question is, at what point in the timeline do you all expect to be able to pull that information? Because we're going to be relying on it to plan, to, to set goals, to, you know, if the book isn't working, the textbook needs to be maybe reviewed. Maybe you want to, you know, refocus on that, adopting a new book. I mean, how, how, with, what, to what, to what degree, to when does that, you know, bell ring for us to then say, we're fully implementing, you know, Schoology and now we can start? I mean, is it reasonable to say that at the end of this year, you'll be able to do that? I mean, I don't know. It's just a question.
Right. This is a tough question, yeah.
Because if you were saying that people weren't doing it with Jupiter grades, right? So where was the accountability piece for that? Or was it just something that we weren't looking at as a resource to extract information?
Yeah, I don't think there was, there was ever really an expectation district-wide, like for everyone to be using Jupiter grades. Nor was there, you know, any real expectation about like how many grades per week do you put in? It was all over the place. And so now with this system, you know, we'll be able to put in, you know, more parameters and guidelines and expectations for what we want to see.
Kind of like the, what the teacher said, you know, but nobody's using Jupiter grade. Some people aren't using it. And so that creates a problem for some students, right? Or maybe not. I mean, you know, everybody does, everybody does it somehow. They get through. But I would assume that the purpose for this more complex system is so that we have a more efficient, you know, way of doing business.
No, no, Ms. Hacker, that's exactly, you're, you're right out of my mouth as well is I think that we've had students that have figured out ways to negotiate or navigate the system. And I think that it's just been unfair for the students and for the, I think for the parents, for the administration and colleagues. You know, there hasn't been a lot of transparency that our district has had through different systems. And so what we're trying to do is streamline it into one. So then we're more transparent to our stakeholders, our parents, our students, our colleagues, our administration, everybody, really.
No, that, oh, please.
Is someone writing what these standards, what the expectation is?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, they ought to be written and presented, I think, at some point. So everyone's clear and they know that this is a target.
But at some point, the board's going to have to measure success. But it's not going to be based on teachers. It's going to be most likely the administrators and the data that they're pulling.
And we've talked about eventually, like at a certain, at a certain point in time when teachers and students have had enough experience with these various platforms that they'll start being evaluated, teachers.
Moving into the teacher evaluation process. It's one of the things we want to bring back. I don't know if I can say this out loud, but, you know, we want to bring back to, to the negotiation processes, adding the tech component to the evaluation. When we walk in, do we see students on devices? Are they engaged in it? Is it a worksheet replacement? Is it not a worksheet replacement, those types of things.
Ms. Hacker, your question is so, like, so connected to what we were talking about earlier in terms of evolving instruction and leveraging data. This system, when we get to where we need to be with it, is going to do that and then some. And to Michael's answer, no, it won't be by the end of the year. Most transformations like this, according to research, take minimally two to three to five years. But with that accountability that we're, Tris, you've talked to me about this a million times and I'm so glad Abel said it out loud. And when we say accountability, we all know we don't mean gotcha. We're coming after you. And when we say accountability, we all know we don't mean gotcha. We're, we're coming after you. It means are we supporting each other and making sure we achieve this goal? And that's part of your role as a site administrator. Whether they're being evaluated formally on it right now or not, it at least has to be part of the conversation and professional development.
And also I just want to give Sarah Kaber at Hawthorne really good, really good credit is she, she has done a voluntary system of adding a technology component to the teacher evaluation where a teacher can opt in. And beyond just having that be part of the evaluation, you know, that, that part informal, that she provides the support with the coach. So, so the teachers work with Sarah and the coach to develop goals. And then the teachers are supported throughout the process.
It's an incredible model. We're done.
Great.
Thank you, guys. That was a, that was a marathon.
I agree.